Okay. They look too happy. He only likes smiling faces.
Alright, so good evening, everyone. What do you say we fire this thing up?
Love it, can't wait.
Everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so on our agenda this evening, right here from our fire chief, um, we rise to a few different things, I believe.
Right, yes, yeah.
Um, and was the patriotic purposes, were they gonna come, come in at a certain time?
Uh, yeah, five thirty.
Five thirty?
Yep.
Alright, uh, discuss Memorial Day.
So all those other times will be moved.
Yeah, and then we'll get into some roundtable discussions, um, like the am- ambulance M O U Warwick Mills update, and discuss the appointment of the town clax- town clerk tax collector, and then we round out the evening with some good old fashioned non-publics.
Haven't had one of those in a while.
And done by s- looks like six thirty-five.
Yeah. We'll see, uh, and then, uh, before we get to that, though, um, since this is our first meeting, you know, after the vote, so we have the realignment of the board, um, and I didn't know if either you two, you know, wanted to step into chairmanship or keep us as we're going and.
It depends on your schedule. Cause you're the one who's got, yeah, the, the jobs that, um, uh, that take you out to take care of part of it more.
Yeah, no, I'm fine serving in this capacity, but if either one of you.
I have no ambition.
At least he's honest.
I won't.
Call him Honest Jason.
Yeah. Um.
So I'll make a motion that Sean continues as chairman.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Um, and then, um, next item would be if there's any requested, uh, reassignments or swap up of our liaison ships.
Well, considering that you've got your wife on the planning board, um, do you feel that there is going to be a conflict with that?
No, no, and we kinda crossed this bridge last year, um, when she, you, um.
She was an alternate then.
Yeah, yeah.
But now she's a full member.
Which she's voted, so it's the same, it's the same thing, really, but she's an individ- like her own independent individual person, um, and that wouldn't make any type of conflicts on the board whatsoever, um, we, cause we did, we looked into that aspect, but if you're uncomfortable with it, um, I can definitely, you know, weigh that out, I have, um, no desire, um, to leave the planning board at this point, but if it was concerned, like we had kinda discussed last year, um, yeah, to certainly revisit like that thought and take, uh, both of you's input and, and weigh it out in consideration.
Yeah, I, you know, I just wanted to know how you felt with it, cause I was going to say that if you wanted to step aside from that, um, that I'd be happy to volunteer for that, and then we could just kind of change things around a bit as, um, when it comes into the, um, the zoning board.
Mm-hmm.
With, given the, the things that are going on, um, I don't get much involvement with the zoning board, even though I'm a full member.
You would have to, if you, if you did the planning board, you would have to step down from the zoning board, that is definitely in the R S A as a conflict, so you couldn't do both.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And so that's, I would recommend the piece of board that, um, that Jay should take my position on zoning. And either way, I was going to downgrade my position on zoning board from being a full member to being, um, an alternative if I stayed there.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, cause they do have enough people nowadays.
Okay.
And, um, and it would be unfair for me to, well, considering that I have to step down, uh, quite lately.
Recuse yourself, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, cause that's one of those, the concerns with going on to the zoning, you know, initially, cause there were decisions that come across our desk.
But there always will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, there always will be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It was interesting, I saw Ringe votes in their zoning board members.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Alright.
On a ballot?
Yeah.
Really?
I just looked at their ballot, there's, all the Z B As are appointed.
Hmm.
Something we could think about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't. Both of them, this is bad, it's second term, what can I say? They require time.
Yes, I mean.
They do, and, and I would like to just leave things as they are for this first year. All the liaisons, everything. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I, yeah, considering that, um, I've got the police department and now they've got the, uh, that, um, a new prosecutor, and there's a whole thing that's signed up for that, creating a committee about that and everything, and my signature is on that now.
Yeah.
So, uh, that would be something that I would like to keep, not that I've done anything with it, cause they haven't had any meetings yet.
Yeah.
Or anything, but it's just a committee that is controlling the finances or whatever other steps happen with the, uh, with that prosecutor.
Yeah. Alright.
Yeah, would you be opposed to just leaving it for this year? All, all liaison ships and?
Yeah, I mean, we can, that's not a problem. Like I said, you know, there are just certain things that I will recuse myself from on the zoning board.
Right.
That, um, you would not have to accuse yourself from.
Well, that's kinda interesting, but I won't go there.
Alright.
Hmm.
So I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah. Well, I mean.
But again, they've got a full, at least right now, they've got, uh, a number of people that are, are there, I don't know, um, how long that's going to last.
Most of them are alternates.
Most of them are, yeah.
I think there's only three full members and you have one of them, I think.
No, no, a full, a couple of members.
Okay.
I just sent you the email.
Was it, they sent you the breakdown of their?
I just sent, I just went through all, so twenty minutes, fifteen minutes ago.
Just today? Oh.
All the boards, commissions and whatever.
Yes, I, I am a full member of the, uh, the board.
Wow, awesome.
Right. But I don't think the Z B A ever had a liaison.
No.
Well, it's called a ex-officer.
You, you were.
What is it called?
Yeah, because he's a, he's a full member.
Ex officio. Ex officio.
No, but, and that ex officio, the Z B A, I don't think the Z B A ever had an ex officio from the selectmen.
I'm just a full member. Yeah.
No, but that doesn't mean that they can't.
No, well.
It does not say.
It doesn't say you can't, it's not recommended, we went through this when you were.
That's right. And that's, and we went through that before, as my being a member.
Right, so if you wanted to step down, you can, and it's not gonna affect anything, no one needs to take your shoes.
Yeah. Right.
From the select board.
No, but I thought it would be good for a, a select board person to be on there in order to get back to us.
Yeah.
They can talk as the year goes on, if you, I don't think we have to decide it tonight, do we?
No.
Yeah.
I was just, we were just putting it up.
And I, I wanna clarify, it's not cause of, um, laziness, I think we've had so much change in three years, it would be nice to be able to try and do a little consistency.
Okay.
That's, that's really my motivation for declining.
Yeah, stabilize, yeah, of.
That's how I feel.
Hmm. Alright. Are we, are we good with moving on from this?
I think so.
Sure.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, so, fire department chief, what brings you before us this evening?
Alright, yeah, basically, just moving forward, so there's, just so you know, we have a plan in place for, for moving forward for the department. After July is, uh, Deputy Hatcher will take the chief's position, and Deputy Valencourt will act as deputy chief in the C two position. What that's gonna leave open is a building inspector, and I would suggest that you advertise the position, probably sooner than later, just so you can get a, uh, list of candidates that can be vetted out prior to July one, so.
Yeah.
I can tell you it's been extremely busy, so.
Okay. And, uh, how did you guys come to that reconfiguration?
Uh, just basically with, you know, with me retiring, and just as Ben is in the C two position, Cody's in the C three position, it just moves them all up a step.
Okay.
It is basically what it does.
I believe it is the selectmen who appoint.
Well, that's, that's our recommendation.
So this is a recommendation?
That's our recommendation, I guess, proper verbiage, yes, yeah.
We went to the membership as well.
Yeah.
We went to the officers.
Last night we had a meeting with the officers and they all agreed to that, so.
The goal for the, for the position of the fire chief is to still go after the full-time position, that's our goal. We said, you know, when Gary, when he's chief, it was to try to go for it, and we did, I mean, we missed it by, I think it was seventeen votes or sixteen votes.
Seventeen, yeah.
Um, so our goal this year, now that the position hasn't passed, is how do we get, how do we make this a full-time position? Do we go back to, how, you know, what, what different avenues can we go down? Um, so that's kind of still where we really wanna be, is to hire it out, I'm just gonna fill in until we have that full-time position available. Um, the goal is still to have a full-time fire chief building inspector, but there's nobody that can do the interim of both, right now. We had Gary for the interim that we did, and it was a great thing for the time, but none of us had the time for it. And without creating huge turmoil in, in either department, rather than hire someone that comes in temporarily, and then hire somebody else potentially after that, if the full-time position does pass, how do you, you don't really wanna do that, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So hopefully it'll be a, a six-month appointment for, for Ben, and then maybe that'll, it'll come around, you know, for a one-year.
Be a one-year appointment, at that point, we'll reevaluate at the end of the next year and go, hey, we have the funding for the full-time chief, whether it be ballot or exactly to the budget, whatever, whatever we just, you guys decide to do with that, however we attack that full-time position again. But I think, you know, talking to Gary, it seems like that building inspector, oh, I mean, Lou was a hundred percent right, it, it is, you almost want two positions, cause they're both so busy, right? And then you end up with a more qualified building inspector versus having a mix of both, you know, you get both people at their high, you know, knowledge of the job versus a mixture of the two, where it might be a little bit lower tiers, but you get the good combination, so. That might be an avenue you guys have to look at, or we'll look at, but, you know, I, a lot of towns start off with a combination position, and then switch to two different positions.
Hmm.
Where we're this late in the ballgame, it could justify two full-time positions, but the taxpayers may not help for that, you know, it's.
Yeah, so you're just gonna be able to fill the gap, that interim gap, so.
Alright. Um, yeah, not really too prepared to discuss this, like, at length this evening.
Right, I just wanted to throw it out, so I knew, you know, just gonna have to figure it out, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And essentially, this is what we're proposing.
The, the thought has been.
Hmm. I'm sure you've been, yeah, yeah.
There we go, yeah, yeah, and candidates and all of that.
Right, yeah. On just how you're gonna approach it, you know?
Yeah.
Alright, wanna revisit?
Yeah, I'd some.
Give a couple weeks to.
I think we can safely give it a couple weeks, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, we wanna do the right thing.
Yeah. Uh.
Sort of a little later, you know?
To have a plan is what we're.
Just to have a plan, it's.
And you have given us your recommendations for that plan.
Right, yes.
Although you didn't recommend a building inspector. Maybe Joe.
I thought you were sitting in a corner.
No, we got, you know, on, on the fireside, it's pretty straightforward, but nobody on the fireside has the time to do the building inspector. You know? It's just been, I, I started at nine o'clock this morning, and my phone just rang just before I came here, people looking for an inspection. And a call, you know, a call from New York, New York, on a renovation project, a call from Saugus, Mass, on people moving in for renovation.
Hmm, that's where I grew up.
Uh, a garage demolition permit, yeah, no else.
So it goes.
Lot of questions.
Yeah.
Subject questions from King today, yeah, so it's, it's very.
Why are people from out of town calling you?
Probably moved over to town.
I don't know.
So, do you wanna put it on for April thir- uh, April second? And probably have, um, the three of you come back in and, you know, you know, prepare some questions.
We're gonna be, we're gonna be back anyways, cause that's when the, uh, truck bids are due back.
Okay.
Right, right.
Exciting.
Oh. Out for two of us.
They're on the agenda, right.
Do you wanna just do it that night anyway?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, we have, what, what happened?
I'll give you the new form we have for, um, recommendations for appointments.
Hmm.
Well, okay, we have a new form now.
Yeah, trying to keep track of things.
Yeah.
So were you talking about the, like, refurbished bids?
Yes, yeah, those will be back to us on the second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, back to, uh, yeah, back two P M.
So open city bids.
Yeah, it goes to Debbie.
Yeah.
Not, not to us, we wanna keep it.
Mm-hmm.
Keep our hands clean a bit, so it doesn't, you know.
Look like, yeah, exactly, so.
Seal bid.
Right, seal bid, ready, back, yeah.
Hmm, excellent, yeah, so that's a good night.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a full night with these guys.
Yeah, yeah.
We should get pizza or something.
I was just saying, I'll have a pizza.
So, um, if you gentlemen wouldn't mind, you know, preparing some questions before that evening, um, you know, any, you know, questions or concerns that you have, you know, with the realignment and, uh, what the process could be, yeah.
Yeah, well, I think it would be, it would be, uh, good to have a non-public scheduled, so that we can talk with potential candidates.
Okay. So.
On that same.
Do you wanna do the non-public first? So Ron doesn't have that wonkiness, and, and they don't have to wait till the end of the night?
Well, we'll figure it out, like, as it gets closer, we'll see what ends up being on the agenda, and, yeah.
Alright.
Cause I know earlier works better for you guys, cause you have your own meeting Tuesday evenings, yeah, so we'll keep that in mind as well.
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
Alright.
Hey.
Didn't you have that? Right.
Um, yes, and then, um, the only, I think this is one of the things we brought, bring up is working with the highway department, they ended up doing one ton this year, so we worked, kind of deal with Peter Somro, Oregon, to take their old flatbed and try to make it into a brush truck. Our brush truck that we currently have is lucky to be running, um, it was that, it wasn't, it's not a two and a half, it's a military truck, we end up in the state, and it's going down the road of being a real headache right now, um, so rather than putting money into it, where we don't actually own it, it's still the states, we just have possession of it, um, so if it goes time to sell it, we can't do anything, we can give it back to the state.
We have to give it back, don't we, can't sell it?
So, rather, like I said, rather than put a bunch, bunch of money into it for absolutely really nothing, we're hoping to take possession of that F I fifty, make a brush truck, we have, um, all the people lined up to donate it, so it really shouldn't be much of a cost at all to the town, this is just a quick real fix for the town to, again, save some money, um, and we're not back here asking for another truck, we can just make do with this truck, make it work, and put a tank and a pump and some tools on it, and make it work for the town, you know?
Yeah.
You don't really want, you know, the business side of it, you don't really want a new brush truck. You want a truck that if, if it's, goes off-road and gets a dent, you didn't just spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this thing, you go, okay, guys, no more dents, but it's, you know what I mean, it, it's, it's part of.
It's a brush truck.
It is, and it, it has to be okay to do that stuff, um, this truck was the oldest truck in their fleet, and, um.
Is, I haven't talked to Peter about this at all, are they currently using it?
They were, if it sat in their way, they would use it type of thing, but Peter had no issue giving it to us at all, and we had a kind of conversation from department to department to see if they minded giving it to us, and Peter's like, if you guys have a real need for it, we're happy to give it up to you, we don't, we don't have a real need for it, but if you guys can use it, great, and that would essentially save the taxpayers some money, so we're all kind of excited about that.
Hmm. And it, it's running and roadworthy?
Yeah. They've been using it, uh, here and there, because it's, it's, it's readily available, you know, type of thing, but he was using it, you know, if they're doing a road repair, they put their plates on it, and he's like, we have trailers for that, so we don't have to utilize that truck, we, we have other tools available to us where we may not, you know, so.
The current brush truck we have from the state does have electrical issues.
All them are fine.
Yeah, and we did have, uh, A one look, this, they will not touch it.
Yeah.
So, what do we do, you know, what do you do, what do you do, you know?
Even though, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you look underneath the dash and every, every wire is yellow. So how do you trace it?
So do you just give that back to the state?
Then it goes back to the state, yeah.
Uh, I think if both departments are in agreement, I see no issue to you.
No, no. Alright, Lou, do you have any questions, comments on this?
I need to think about it for a while.
Okay.
At the moment, yeah, this is something new, I wasn't prepared to address it at this time.
Yeah, I think there's precedence with, like, the P D used to give their old car to the dog catcher.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So you guys are like the dog catcher.
Yeah.
Build stuff with, yeah.
I mean, in the past, in the past, it's what's happened, we've taken, like, with our current utility truck that we have came from the highway department.
But for us, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, uh, it was our brush truck for a long time, until it became an issue with the weight on the back, you know, modern technology, new tools, new this, new that, well, the truck can't carry all that, and then water became an issue too, because the leaf springs are drunk on that, so we used that as utility truck, and then we got the brush truck that we have now, which got us to, what, two years?
Right.
And now we're looking at this issue that we can't quite fix, cause there isn't anybody that wants to touch it, you know?
Yeah.
Um.
Is this an urgent need?
It is, because we're in the brush season now, so we were trying to find a quick fix for this issue, um, and this seems to be the cheapest, fastest way to do this, um, so that's, it, it is, it is an, it is an urgent need, yes. Question. Yeah. Um, it, it says on that paper about, uh, it's a one-ton dump truck. Yep. Is that like a F four fifty or something?
Five fifty.
Five fifty?
It's a five fifty, yeah.
Okay. Um, it, it is a flatbed, it is. Is that the one that's got the, um, the problem with the exhaust manifold? No, I think that's their green, the green single cab truck they had for a while, you just drove, does it have a manifold?
Yeah, I didn't, didn't sound like it had a manifold leak to me, but.
Okay, cause we still have that one truck that, um, we decided not to sell and just keep it as a spare to them.
Hmm.
And I believe that was in that F fifty. So then it might be this, yeah, then that's the truck. Yeah, and it was going to take about six thousand dollars to bring that one, um, uh, to get that problem fixed.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's an option here that we can.
Well, that, that may be the truck. It might be that it just wouldn't be feasible to use it for heavy use like the highway department would for a C's guys.
We use it once a month.
Could link it along.
Yeah.
Could be, I don't know, I haven't talked to Peter.
Yeah, there was, there was a, uh. No, he didn't say anything about a manifold leak, so.
Manifold leak could be interesting if you go out on dry leaves.
Well, yeah, well, one of the problems, the problems with it there is that to do that repair, you have to take the cab off the truck.
I remember that coming to our table.
Yeah.
I don't know which truck it was.
So, that, um, that just gets to be more labor intensive, um, than you're gonna fix it.
Well, yeah, yeah.
But maybe something you guys wanna look into, you know, just get clarity on?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I think, yeah, the issue is if they come back and say it is, I mean, if we look at it and go, we can make it work, I mean, it's a brush truck, that's the thing, you know, it's, I, I understand it might have a manifold leak, but we'll get us through.
Yeah.
And that's what we're looking at, I understand, we have no other options right now.
Do you have any idea how much it would cost to fit it up for you guys?
We have, um, a company in, in, uh, Air that's willing to donate all the pipe and plumbing, they're gonna do everything for us, they're gonna make it.
This company's gonna donate it?
Yeah.
Where do you guys find these companies?
It's good to have friends, but instead of asking for favors for myself, I ask for favors for the town, so. It's, um, they were willing to do us a write-off, so they'll give us a value of their work at the end of it, a list of parts, and we just, we basically write it off.
A donation, yeah.
It's a donation to the town.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome.
The, um, again, we're keeping the taxpayers' money in, in, in mind, that's why we thought this would be a really good idea, we have a way to get what we need and not really cost a whole lot of money at all, if anything.
Yeah.
So.
Alright, yeah, I can't think of any reason to hold this up.
Yeah, I don't.
If, can we proceed with it with the understanding that if we find a big issue, we'll come back to you, otherwise we'll make it work?
Well, if there's a big issue with it, it's here anyways.
Right.
Cause it's either with the highway department or with you, it doesn't matter to me who has the issue.
Yeah, yeah, same difference.
It's all a part of the town.
Yeah, I mean, just in, just like I said, just keeping in mind, just we're trying to get this moving, you know, instead of it.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that, huh?
Hmm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the transfer of the F five fifty one ton dump truck, uh, from the highway department to the fire department.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Question for you.
Webstein?
Webstein?
Mm-hmm. Um, now, department to department, does that change license, uh, registration?
I think it does.
Okay.
Yeah, they will.
Cause I think you guys have to have fire on.
It says something.
Big, uh, I think so too.
Doesn't it, on that?
Primax doesn't change something.
Yeah, they'd carry, yeah, they'd make sure that everything was spun over.
Um, I would just let them know if they come the D P W, I just need the VIN number and all that fun stuff.
I'll give you that.
Alright. Excellent.
Thanks.
You got it. Next order of business?
I'll, I'll leave this, if, on the generator agreements, you know, we had filled out, you guys had signed all the paperwork, it was all on one sheet, they wanted each one listed individual, and so this is, just gonna sign these three pages, I'll attach it, and then send it back to the state anyways, I'll leave this, I mean, before you go home tonight, if you can get that, then I'll pick it up from, uh, Deb.
Okay.
And then I can get them back to the state, so.
And I, and I have spoken with Gary, Peter, and Jeff about the generators, so those conversations are all started and.
Okay, good, cause I was gonna bring that up, like, with the, um, conversation with Warwick Mills, they, they brought up.
Yeah.
That the, there was blocking their, getting in there.
There's blocking their entrance.
There, it's not, though.
Well, whatever, I just.
Yeah, I just let them know it wasn't, like, Peter was careful about how he, um, put them up there, so we'll talk about that during there as well.
Wait, there's a big problem, I can.
Yeah, we will.
If there's a problem, I can, I can put it there. Jeff, Jeff, uh, wanted to.
I'm sure Peter could move on as well.
So the drill mission, he couldn't, cause he didn't have forks for his loader. About how he can, uh, take use of that generator.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so, that's why I came up.
Yeah.
I took him off my trailer and I, I need the, to keep him out of that.
Yeah.
Too many separate, I can't, I can't take notes on all this.
I'll stop you.
Yeah, roughly.
I didn't hear one word he said.
Uh, Lou had said how Jeff wanted to speak to us about how to, if that building could have use of the gen- like, the full building, so even his space, when it needs to go on.
Hmm.
Um, you know, to kind of, probably to negotiate.
Yeah, there should be some. Negotiations that take place, uh. And it would only make sense, because.
Yeah, and that can be, and we can break that out into separate, um, metering, um, on the use of that, as part of the installation of the wiring.
Yeah, they, I think we do need a top, we need to sit down.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, and really hash it out, cause this is something that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, really being the least building and everything, so. But, yeah, so that, that's, it's all been started.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Anything else?
That's it?
Cool.
What's your bag?
Oh, five thirty with a dot, look at.
Still aren't scheduled.
Wow, love it.
Nothing's gonna get us down today.
No, cause you were supposed to have the ambulance, Warwick Mills and Department of Town.
There's something already jumped in, you you missed that part, oh, no, you didn't, you were here, um, something, something jumped in at five thirty before that stuff, so, good.
Yeah.
But.
That'll be good.
That person's not here, so.
Cool, yeah, and those are all just the same, cause we only signed one agreement, right?
Right, it was all the, all, the whole agreement was on one sheet.
Yeah.
And the state, they want it on three sheets, three separate breakouts, that's the way the feds want it, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
This is really an odd sheet.
It it's the same thing, right, yeah.
We already discussed this, right?
Yeah.
We did.
Are they separated by the serial number?
I have them broken out, I have, I have the cover sheets broken out by serial numbers and the PPO numbers that's required by the feds, so.
Okay.
And so I need to signature, then these will go with it, the cover sheets will go with it, and back to the, uh, to Mr. Bernard at the, you know.
If those generators are in the way, I can come back and move them for you guys, it's not a big deal, I just put them in there, so they were out of the elements while we were trying to figure this out, but if they're in the way.
She said they're not.
Okay.
Well, I wa, I walked down there with, um, Mark.
I tried to keep them to the edge, so you could walk behind them.
Yeah, and they're not blocking any doors or anything, so.
Right, they're just sitting there, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not sure why she thought they were blocking an entrance, cause, I mean, like I said, I I went down there and it's not, you can.
If you're trying to use a loading dock, it wouldn't really be, I mean, you can still get around it.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, again, if there's an issue.
Yeah, I think we just signed that, the right side, right? And then the left side is for witnesses of the signatures, if we're coming in separately to.
Oh, is that how it was supposed to be? I thought witness, signature.
I could witness your signatures on here.
Yeah, anybody can witness the signature, I guess Debbie could witness the signature.
So I put my signature on witness.
Well, that's fine, I don't think.
You don't care?
I don't care.
You're gonna witness all of us?
I couldn't.
Yeah, he witnessed everybody.
Really?
I said, you want me to remind anyone, since you don't want to ask her?
Cody's the one that has nothing to do with the generators.
Get his name on, he's got his name all over everything.
I went down and got him, you found him.
Mm, right.
I think we're good, you're gonna sign, but.
Sure.
Why not?
Do we have the funding to put him in, do you think, or we're trying to figure that out, so?
No, we do, yeah.
I'm willing to help with whatever you guys need to, to help them go in or whatever.
All right.
So, let me know, I talked to Peter about it briefly, about if he needs a mini excavator or something like that, we'll just get it done, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you need to?
I think you're something else.
Sign these or witness it?
We can witness it.
Yeah, you guys can witness it, you were sitting here watching. It's all good. Cody can do it.
Yeah.
And if you just.
Chief, sorry, you got it.
Scan those and just send them over to Debbie, till we have them.
Yeah. Complete.
Yes, yeah.
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 I'll swing by tomorrow anyway, so.
Perfect, awesome.
A bunch of stuff.
Cool.
Bunch of stuff.
Very good.
We canceled the staff meeting tomorrow, so.
Like, yeah.
Sounds like you got plenty of time there.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, cause.
I was gonna bring Peter along too.
That's Boston tomorrow, so.
Oh, right, yeah, that's why I canceled it, cause he was gonna come and he can't, so.
He's in Boston. He can't make it, cause he's gonna, he's gonna work.
Yeah, so he's gonna be April third, we're gonna reschedule that.
Yeah, that's fine, but yeah, I'll be, I got a bunch of permit stuff to do, so.
Okay, cool, nice.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
All right.
Thank you.
Make it for all you do.
Yep, thanks, guys.
Yep.
All right.
Joe, you hanging out or?
Just hanging out, yep.
Just hanging out.
That's okay, yep.
Future selectman? You always say no, but you just like listening to us?
He's future chair of the budget committee.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know, haven't heard.
Now, we're not gonna call it budget base, can you say, from the past couple of years, it's working well, we don't want to change it?
Right, right, it's Pfizer, yeah, um.
Quit echoing me.
So the, um, Warwick MOU is in the, what the heck, the ambulance MOU is in the signature folder.
Okay.
Um, Wendy said nothing was gonna change unless you guys wanted to change it, um, so, status quo, and it's in there, those signatures. Unless there's something on it though.
Yeah, no, I can't think of any deficiencies. Or anything I'd like to change. It's been working now for a few years, so.
The only thing I changed on it was the date. Hello, sir.
Hello.
How are you?
Oh, slow moving today. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Sorry I'm late.
Sorry.
We moved on without you.
We'll come right back to you, though.
All right, take your time.
Do you have any concerns with that, Lou?
I haven't read it.
Well, it's, that's the same one that we've, um, done the last couple of years, too.
Nothing's changed.
That's a joke, right, I'm supposed to remember, is that a year ago?
Nothing has changed, other than the dates.
Especially the con. Only kidding, he nails it.
You don't?
I do remember this.
Well, he's reading that, um, Jason was sworn in at our emergency meeting on Thursday night as well as the town clerk tax collector.
Excellent.
I don't know if you wanted to expand on that at all, I don't know.
Yeah, I wasn't able to make it, so I apologize. You know, one for the lateness of the hour, cause I thought by seven I'd be able to make it back to town, but I didn't get back to town till about nine, so.
Who's signing for it?
Life on the fourteenth floor.
You are?
Uh, I think, all right, you had signed last year's.
I signed it last year, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, I'm fine with it.
I am.
You know, Jason's fine with it, all right. Did you wanna expand on?
Well, I think we had to have the emergency meeting, because, um, somewhere along the line, it was, the ball was dropped, um. The town clerk was up for reelection.
Hmm.
And was not put on the ballot, and so there is an apology to the citizens.
Correct.
Of New Ipswich for dropping the ball.
Yeah.
So we, Lou and I appointed her for one year. And then she'll be, if she chooses to run for town clerk tax collector, she'll have a two-year term.
Hmm.
Right, to complete the whole three-year cycle.
So it will go to complete the circuit. So, yeah, another thing.
Yeah.
That we can, I don't know, how you keep track of all these things, Debbie said she sent an email today.
You got it. Yeah.
With everybody's terms, um.
Appointed and elected.
That will be a good thing, and that hopefully is done on a spreadsheet.
You betcha.
Easily updated.
Highlighted, easily updated, highlighted with one color for appointed terms that we need to keep on our radar.
I can't wait to look at it, yeah.
Green, green highlighted to, uh, if they have to be on the ballot the following year, so I'm just gonna keep it going the, every year, so.
Excellent.
So the twenty twenty-five one, I already have them highlighted of who needs to be on the ballot, it's all good.
Yeah, that actually, I think, uh, with that being on the ballot next year, not that it makes any difference, but that would have been the regular year for that, no?
It would have been this year, my term is town clerk tax collector expired in twenty-four.
Okay, so.
She, she was elected last year.
Yeah, yeah.
For, but it was to serve out the remaining.
Right, it was for a one-year term, it wasn't for a three-year term.
It was originally, yeah, she had two, yeah, yeah.
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 All right, so next year's ballot will be for two years.
Correct.
Yeah. We did bring that up, uh, ahead of the election as well, like, right when we found out, cause it was right after.
Yeah. Right.
The declar, declarations of candidacy closed, and, yeah.
It was too late to. Yeah.
Get better every day.
Sure. Every time we find something that falls through the cracks, we fill the crack.
All right, and then before we enter, uh, Warwick Mills.
Yep.
We'll recognize Sean Bader, so you're chair of the patriotic purposes committee?
Yes, sir, I was wondering if any gentlemen would like to speak at our Memorial Day Parade?
Yeah, I would like to.
I'd like the Smithville.
Smithville?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hmm.
And you'd like to in the afternoon, would you?
Yeah, am I doing central?
I'd do central.
Yeah, or if you wanted to switch from soldiers to central, it's up to you.
I'll, I'll keep soldiers.
Okay.
Perfect, beautiful, and I have one other question. The, um, two hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary.
Yeah.
Account that we just opened.
Hmm.
Would we be able to use that for donations?
For patriotic purposes?
For patriotic purposes.
No, cause that's, uh, for one specific event.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, everything has to have a specific purpose, and you can't in- intermingle, we were trying to merge it with parks and rec, you can't do that either.
Unless they have some technical say over it somehow, right?
No, even then, because those, the Parks and Rec revolving fund was made for specifically Parks and Rec purposes, so it, patriotic purposes isn't part of Parks and Rec, it's its own thing. So it doesn't fall under that, unfortunately. We tried.
There's already accounts set up for.
Patriotic?
I guess, yeah, Memorial Day Committee, yeah.
It's a budget one.
Here's, here's the thing, how did we receive a donation, a donated fire truck?
Because you can accept donations.
So the selectmen could accept a donation.
Right.
Earmarked to patriotic committee Memorial Day Parade. And s, then that money would come in, the person who donated would get the tax deduction.
Hmm.
Um, and it would, the treasurer would be notified, this money is earmarked towards paying.
But where would, where would that money go to?
Such and such. Patriotic committee.
There isn't a, there isn't an account set up.
Well, we could do it with Memorial, can we rename the Memorial Day?
We don't have a fund for that, it's only, it's only.
No, no, but we make lines.
Other line, that's what I mean.
But we make lines in budgets all the time, I know Joe doesn't like the idea of making more lines.
But you can't add to it, though, cause it, the budget is the budget, it's, it's what the voters voted on.
Hmm.
So you can't add things to that, you can't add money to that.
What about special events?
How's it, how's the rec department work then?
Like, in the rec department, they have special event accounts for.
Cause they have the revolving fund.
Right, so they're all named special, certain things.
Right, but some events aren't specifically named for one thing, there's multiple things that are going on in them.
Well, there's a bunch.
And that, you're skipping a step where they actually have a revolving account.
Right. Right.
And they can realign that at any point, like, and change the different names, it's not tax dollars based.
Registration.
It's, you know, it comes in from registration fees and donations and different things, so that whole account and how it works is different than what our general fund and is and how that works, um.
But as far as accepting, I believe selectmen have authority to accept donations.
Yeah, yeah.
And can we accept a donation that's earmarked?
Yeah, we'll just have to look, I know there's a way to do it, but just, we gotta fi, figure out the way to do it.
But it'd have to be quick, cause I believe that it was hoped to be using donations because of lack of funds for the Memorial Day Parade.
Hmm.
And rather than, rather than ask the selectmen to juggle money around inside the budget, um.
We're trying to get, get it for the morning parade.
How come we can't accept it, Debbie, and apply it, like, and utilize the Memorial Day?
Because you're talking, accepting a donation, that has to be kept separate from taxpayer dollars, which is, that's what the budget is.
Account. Yeah. Yeah.
That's what those lines are.
So why do we have to put it in the operating budget, why wouldn't we just put it in Parks and Recs and call it an event? Just ask Mindy a separate, separate account within her, within her revolving account, and have her manage it?
I, I believe. Cause if there was an event called music.
When I, when I spoke with maybe she's.
Well, she already had a.
She has some accounts that she utilizes for, like, the soccer team going to Florida.
Right, right.
Things like that, but those accounts are not specifically for that thing, they're for certain events.
Right.
And that each event has its own books.
Right.
So to speak.
No.
Instead of, she thinks that we might be able to utilize something like that, but.
I looked at the Heritage Commission and the purpose of it, and I believe the last line of the Heritage Commission could be utilized, to accept donations through the Heritage Commission revolving, or ex, what's it called?
Mm-hmm.
Expense, what is that thing called?
Expendable.
Expendable trust.
We have a great group of motivated people on the purpose, the patriotic purposes committee.
Right, and I get that, I'm not trying to tell you you can't do anything and and discourage anything at all, I just don't want the auditors on our back saying, you c, you, you accepted this money and you put it here and it cannot go there, and
Yeah.
I don't want any residents saying, well, what the heck are you doing, we need, we have to do it the right way. So.
So that's why it can't sit underneath Parks and Rec.
Here's, here's one advantage to Heritage.
Yeah.
Is there's no activity on Heritage, it would not get no potential of getting lost in any kind of shuffle.
Hmm.
Or seeming to be obscure to any potential ninety-one A requests, it would stand out like a sore thumb, cause there's no activity on that.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe we would apply the treasurer key books on it all.
So I'm not sure.
So that's gotta be a revolving fund?
It's an expendable trust.
Expendable trust.
Set up to take donations.
For the Heritage Commission.
For the Heritage.
It's very specific.
Right.
That's the problem.
Uh, but read the last part of the charter for the Heritage Commission. I can read it, I won't ask you to.
While you're looking, I, I would argue that I'd rather have Mindy managing the money as part of the Parks and Rec, cause she does it for a whole bunch of different activities. So if we just earmarked it within the Parks and Rec, Mindy does it for different programs. So, I, I su, I suspect she'd be able to pull that right together and and manage it from there.
Cause any reconfiguration of those accounts in the past has just been a request that would come and it's fine, you know, like, however they wanna to deal with it. I don't remember being an issue, it doesn't have to go happen before the election or before the budget passes, cause it's not a part of our general fund budget.
Cause it's not part, kind of like.
Yeah, it's not, it's not tax dollars, it's donations.
So, so, like, technically, like, they're running for next year.
It's the Heritage. You're saying that Heritage is part of the board?
No, not Heritage, but the Parks and Rec.
Heritage is a leader.
The revolving account.
Okay.
So then I'd be putting the patriotic purposes underneath Parks and Rec.
And they would be under the purview of.
And that would be the way to do it.
If there's a, um, category that would fit.
Uh, you can, uh, make a new category, cause even if she wanted to get more specific and know how much she spends on Easter egg specifically, she could have one just for Easter egg expenses.
Does she need to go for the fishing to make that happen?
No, no, it's not a part of the general fund, the taxpayers don't fund it. It's, uh, funded through the, uh, donation, and, like I said, registrations and different fees.
So then the question is, if the patriotic committee.
Hmm.
Was able to work it out with Mindy, do we have any say in this? Do we need to authorize the patriotic committee to work under Mindy, or are they? Do we need to authorize the Patriotic Committee to work under Mindy, or are they able to?
Well, they could just come with a simple recommendation and if any of us had any concerns with it, we certainly voiced the concerns, but um if there's nothing compelling, stopping it.
If we were to do that, would that change our status with the with the um budget money for the general fund?
No, that status would stay the same.
Wouldn't it change the status?
No, it would just be for that donation account.
Yeah, it's not going anywhere near the budget.
No, 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 I meant if we go under Mindy as a pa- as a patriotic purposes committee.
But you wouldn't be legally going under her purview, it would only be this earmarked section of what you're doing would be out of your hands, it would be completely in her hands, if I understand it right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And the buck would stop at her.
Right, the donation checks would go to the treasurer. We would keep a set of books, she would keep a set of books. More or less, that would be our discussion if it was possible.
So. If it was possible, um.
So I think it just needs to be looked looked at and make sure it's done right, but I don't see why it wouldn't be able to be done. I don't know.
I think the Heritage should be able to have its own event, another line item called events and handle it the same way as that um uh Parks and Rec handles theirs. Is there a problem with doing that?
Well, the Heritage, it's not a revolving account, right? Oh, it's revolving.
That doesn't mean that you can't create
Yeah.
a revolving account, don't you think?
By a warrant article, you can create a warrant article, I mean, you can create a revolving account, you can't just create one out of thin air.
Okay, so that could be jacked in another year.
It has to be uh in a warrant article.
Yeah, it'd have to be. A separate one.
Right, and that that would have full technical.
So what we can do this year is
For the mind, time being.
simply do it under rec and then transfer it under a warrant article for next year.
There would be nothing to transfer, my uh my assumption is any donations that came in would be expended this year.
No, you can't.
That'd be the hopes if we can make it happen.
Not if we're trying to build something up for the the following year. For the.
Well, that's on that, you know, that committee to decide what they would like to do.
Yeah.
I understand.
Or what if we didn't spend all the money, I guess that is a valid question.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause I'm thinking in terms of long term of two hundred and fifty, two seventy-fifth year anniversary.
That's something different, it's a totally separate.
Yeah, that would be a different one. Nothing good comes easy.
Everything has to be kept separate.
We're willing to do the work, we just wanted to do something extra this year if it's possible, otherwise it's gonna be a
Right, right.
a wash for doing anything more than the Memorial Day Parade.
Will you be able to look at that in tomorrow or the next day?
Sure, yeah, tomorrow, first thing.
Well, if.
Not first thing.
If if the town is unable to facilitate donations to the Patriotic Committee, um which seems like it would be a travesty, I mean, that would be crazy.
Yeah, yeah.
But should that be the case, I think you should just put the word out on your own and see if you can pass a hat. That's a big ask for a committee member, but I don't know, I mean, how much money are you guys like, what was your wish?
Honestly, I'm not sure, at this point, we were hoping to do a Fourth of July Parade.
Let's just stick to Memorial Day.
What's that?
Just sticking with Memorial Day, can you, could you make that?
I don't have a solid number at the moment because of the flag thing, I'm just finally getting a handle on what we need to order for flags, so.
And that should go through, did you talk to Peter?
I did talk to Peter, I talked to Mindy, I talked to everybody I think that's affiliated with flags at town.
Okay.
So I and I, we went through the schoolhouse to figure out what we had, cause there was a lot of old flags in there, flags. So I think we're in a good standing as far as that goes.
Are you talking about flags for the cemetery or flags for the big ones for the poles?
Both.
They're taking over all flags, cause they're patriotic.
Well, they've already ordered flags for this year. Mindy told me she just ordered flags and Peter said he already put them order in.
We're not duplicating it, are we?
No.
That's why you talked to them.
That's why I talked to everybody, but that that would help our budget for for Memorial Day, but I I haven't gotten a solid number to
Well, that's good.
Well, if you start it separate then.
Yeah.
what the expense would be until, cause I just finally talked to everybody and got a handle on all the flag, cause Ali had some at his house. It's been a little bit of a travel, but we're we're getting there.
But I think it's a great thing that the Patriotic Committee would be in charge of all the flags.
Yeah.
Cause they have the eye for it.
That would make sense.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, we've been we were called to the table for having a faded flag.
Relying on. Yeah, right outside.
Painted flag right out front.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so this would be a great ask.
You know, there's been a a way that everything's been done prior to now, so we're trying to kinda
Yeah.
get a handle on it, get everybody on the same page and make sure we're.
Right. And change is good.
We're making sure we have good change happening.
Yep.
Good change is good.
Right, yeah, true.
So I think we're on track, that it's gonna take some time to get everything laid out and perfect, I think by this time next year, everything will be smooth, but.
Nice, yeah.
But we do have foresight to wanna do some parades and
Did you have dates?
some bigger events like fireworks maybe for the Fourth of July and things of that nature, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of different ideas.
But not able to be done on a four thousand dollar budget.
Not not on the current budget.
Can't even buy fireworks for that.
Well.
I buy more than that at my house.
This is part of like the round table, cause we had a Autumn Fest meeting last night and um your son had come, Travis.
Hmm.
You know, cause he's interested in um serving on, you know, the Autumn Fest Committee essentially. Um we fireworks came up and the Fourth of July came up, Patriotic Purposes
Right.
Uh Committee, and a lot of elements of the Patriotic Purposes Committee kinda coincide with some of the the dialogue from rec and what they're looking to do with the community and bring everybody bit like together as a community and um.
Right. I think Mindy and and our committee is definitely on the same page.
Yeah, so that that so uh Fourth of July came up, interesting solution that we came up with, um I'd like to think that it's feasible, cause it makes complete sense.
Yeah.
Um would be to have like a fireworks competition to some degree, and then the town's not purchasing fireworks for the event. And you'd have people register and there'd be guidelines to it, but essentially, you know.
Oh boy.
Yeah, just have a private fireworks display.
See, I was hoping that we'd be able to raise a couple, you know, like ten thousand dollars and put on a really nice show.
But if you if you get fifteen, if you get.
How you how you gonna drive around town and look at everybody's fireworks?
If you get ten people, no, down at the park, so you have them all set up.
Ah.
So you have you have some hobbyists in town is who you're looking to tap into.
And then it brings the community in together, it doesn't become like a town function truly, like it's a function of the community instead of another thing that the town's doing for people.
Are we gonna have old harmless forms for?
So.
That goes without saying, every time you step foot on Memorial Park, you're you gotta hold harmless.
So there are there are like some elements of funding and how things can be done, instead of, was there in this trend of almost disincluding our community?
That's interesting.
And then they start looking to the town function, like the town office, or what are you gonna provide for me, or what is this thing, and then you know, it's so expensive and everybody argues about the different elements to things.
Yeah.
But if we look at it in the terms of bringing individuals down and encouraging them to do what people like to do, you know, like
What we're doing anyway, it's on yet.
Yeah, it can be, yeah, exactly, um I think it would would go over fairly well, um.
Just bring it down there. That's interesting.
As uh, yeah, and then the same thing with two seventy-fifth, don't don't provide food, but make it a potluck, like where everybody comes down, like brings
You should bring ideas.
Right.
That's okay.
Oh, yeah. Right.
Um.
Bring a dish.
Another hold harmless.
Yeah.
Bring a dish when we block off Main Street.
Yeah.
Well, it's good stuff.
So it's kinda like trying to like find ways to not grow this, like grow the beast, so to speak, and uh keep the beast as small as possible and.
Mm-hmm.
But keep the community involved, I kinda like that idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Who else could we do that with?
Yeah, and that started with homemade fireworks was the.
Alright, let's stop there.
Yeah, please.
That was deep to be a bad idea, I may have said that.
Wow.
But we got there, you know.
Yeah.
Um so it's kinda neat, like just even so that Autumn Fest um Committee um was interested in working on the two seventy-fifth uh for twenty twenty-five, I'd like to think that Patriotic Purposes Committee would like to, Parks and Rec would like to, so the whole.
The Heritage Commission and Historical Society should have a seat at the table for the two seventy-fifth.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, but it's just, I mean, it's nice to see like all of this, like everything's kinda coming together.
Yeah.
Um yeah, and it's nice like encouraging to have new board, you know, active boards, Heritage got going again last year and yeah.
Well, we'll see how active.
Yeah, we have been active.
We're gonna stall.
Yeah.
It happens.
We get a roadblock.
But maybe this could be the like the look forward, you know, so and then again, teaming up for the Fourth of July, um with you guys and doing what we can do, um yeah.
Right, I think that's what we're our mindset is.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't even know who I would check with, would I check with the auditor, would I check with the attorney, would I check with the DRA?
Who do we submit, yeah, DRA, right? Or do you have to check with someone, is there a way to put it in the rec revolving?
That's what I'm saying.
As community events, I don't know, I mean.
Yeah, but you'd have to be specific, like you can't.
I think Mindy has a an idea from our conversation, it sounded like, it sounded positive, I
Mm-hmm.
I wanna make sure we're doing things right, I don't wanna.
Exactly, that's that that's that's where my worry is, you know what I mean, I don't want anybody to be able to say, well, you can't do that and
Yeah, we all do.
Yeah.
Then we're gonna roll the.
I think the end game is, and everybody's best interest.
A hundred percent agree, however.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec has a has to have an account when they have, or they haven't done it in quite a while, uh when they have soccer camps type of thing.
They have.
Well, I think she runs it out of under soccer, I don't know how the accounts are set up now, but.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't either, I don't.
It's one revolving account is the umbra- is the umbrella, and then each thing, there there was cheer, there's basketball, there's soccer, there's adult rec, there's a whole bunch of different things that for specific purposes that go under rec.
Mm-hmm, so if you're having a um, then there's probably no reason why you can't have another line item on there for um the heritage stuff. Or the events.
Patriotic.
Because there's no difference between a soccer camp event, you know theoretically, and an event for Fourth of July or Memorial Day or two seventy-fifth.
It it has to do with the specific verbiage of how the rec revolving was set up. That's that's, cause soccer, all the sports, they all fall under rec.
How about fishing derby?
All falls under rec.
Day camp?
All under rec.
So that it's broad, is what I'm hearing.
It's right, however where this is a new thing and it always had its own budget thing, I don't know if that can necessarily just be, hey, let's just throw it under rec.
Well, instead of like endlessly beating this, like.
I don't know. Yeah, that's what I'm
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to find out, I don't know where to start.
Mentioned three different places, well, it's just one of them, one, two, three.
Yeah. So I just wanna make sure we're doing it the right way, so we don't get.
Ninety-one A?
Would this might be reaching a little, but would it be feasible to put for me or any member of the pur- purposes committee to put an escrow account together with the town and as the holder?
I don't think so.
I'm not sure how that would work.
That seems sketchy.
Yeah. Probably plausible to some degree, but yeah, it's.
I mean, everything we're talking about would be temporary until we can get a warrant.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, if if we can put it under rec, then.
I really think for any is allowed, because we had to wait a year.
Right, oh no, I agree.
Yeah, so if you're not just talk to them.
I feel that energy.
If we can just, I'm I'm not even gonna start with Mindy, I'm gonna start with the 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 top end of it, like
Like start with Mindy. Mm-hmm.
Cause if, what's the point of talking to Mindy if I can't, we can't do any of that, I'd rather talk to the auditor, the DRA and the lawyer before I
Well, I mean, just to.
Cause she's already talked to him, it's already good to go on their end, we just need to make sure legally we can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the thing is to understand where she was coming from, to present it to the whoever, DRA.
To see how she sees how it can work.
She said we obviously would be umbrellaed under the rec department, but she wants nothing to do with it, but
Right.
Yeah.
so you know that.
Yeah, she'll end up with the responsibility.
For us to get it this next year.
Yeah.
And I can appreciate that, she's got a lot on her plate.
Does the Finance Advisory Committee have a any kind of a budget? No budget?
No, we have no budget at all.
Oh.
I know, it's unfortunate.
You you got the whole budget.
You have the whole budget.
Should at least give him a pizza budget.
So did you have times and and date?
I'm sorry.
Uh for the parade, is it on yet, everything finalized or not yet?
Nothing finalized, but it's going to happen regardless, we have.
Is it still gonna be the Saturday before?
It will be the Sunday before.
Sunday before I meant, yeah, same as always.
Correct. Yeah, I believe we're gonna make an attempt to change the date next year, just because of time where, you know, our we have a band that's committed that will do that day, we have the BFW that will do that day.
I think it's May nineteenth.
But we're trying to expand onto it with uh New Hampshire Fifth Regiment, I'm waiting, I should hear back from them today or tomorrow, whether or not they're able to march with us. And that's the Revolutionary War and Civil War reenactment here.
Nice.
Are you serious?
That'd be amazing.
So.
Oh, that would be awesome.
We're hoping, you know, yeah.
Hmm.
Love it.
Um we were hoping for Fall Mountains ROTC program to march with us, but they couldn't pull it together in the last minute, so
Can you get them for both parades?
you know, and then there's other things where Fourth of July wouldn't work, but um in the fall for the Autumn Fest, you know Franklin Pierce, they have an amazing marching band that would be available during school seat time, you know, the other schools, Rofer, Conan, all those schools would like to march with us, you know.
That'd be cool.
During school time.
Yeah.
In the summertime, they can't pull those things together.
Right.
Unfortunately, we missed it. We missed Franklin Pierce by two weeks.
Yeah. Oh, figures.
Send their kids home, and they don't cost anything.
Yeah. Oh, that's nice, we like that, book them for book them for whenever you can.
Then the other.
Well, that's the thing is our.
Have give them a save the date.
Have you guys thought of putting the word out to see if there can be a marching band assembled from the many talented musicians in town?
It is not an option this year.
Right, I get that, you're not gonna put something together in a month, but is there an interest, I wonder?
The music director did not seem very positive.
I'm not talking about the school.
Oh, you mean from the townspeople?
From the townspeople.
Um.
I know there's a there's a group.
That's an interesting thought, I don't normally throw that thought on the table.
Yeah, there is a group of musicians, there's gotta be a bunch of basement musicians in town. Whether they have an interest in a marching band is another question, but I think it'd be worthwhile.
Right.
Or even if they'd play at one spot, you know, like they're, I mean, if you if you played it on the Autumn Fest, then just, I mean, last year they had a
Yeah, that has that.
somebody singing and whatever.
Yeah, and you guys will have still have, like some of the kids singing and.
Just have a band.
Right, we're gonna have all that stuff still.
Yeah.
So, May nineteenth?
Um. With, I'm sorry.
May nineteenth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and I sent you the letter.
Yes.
Okay, and and the mailing labels.
Yes, I did get the mailing labels as well.
For all the veterans, yeah. Okay.
Um that'll need to, we need to change that a little bit, but that's.
Change the letter?
Will the dates and things like that.
Oh, yeah, that's what I said, this is this is the letter we sent out last year, so I whatever you're gonna do this year.
Right. And we're we're also gonna do a social media purge. There are a lot of veterans in town that should be marching to pay homage to our fallen, you know. I'm gonna try and reach out to them, I'm I'm gonna try and reach out to them.
You know what else? If if you're doing something on that medium, which I don't like, but anyways.
I don't like it, but I'll use it.
If you could ask if any of the veterans would like to speak, I would gladly give up my spot.
Okay.
Yeah, that would, I think that would be kind of cool.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't you talk last year too about having reading somebody's story?
If you have your stuff, if your regiment comes, I'd already ask them to speak as well.
Are they going to?
They had their committee meeting tonight, so they're gonna let me know.
Oh, that's exciting.
Sorry, what was that, I missed.
I guess we can.
New Hampshire Fifth Regiment, um I asked them to do a short, three minute or less talk to
So they do.
So we can understand the history from, you know, the historical point of view.
They do.
Yeah.
Is it Revolutionary War and Civil War?
Yes.
Isn't that just them two, and they'll be reenactors, so they'll be pretty much marching um. And they'll be reenactors, so they'll be pretty much marching um.
We're not sure how many, cause he said it's kinda close on. Plans because.
Even if you had.
It's a volunteer two group, so. You know, some people go on vacation or whatnot, so.
That sounds really neat.
We're hopeful.
Yeah.
So.
A lot of things in the works.
I know, I can't wait to see it.
Next year will probably be a lot better, but. We're trying to make some exciting things happen this year.
That sounds like it.
Love it.
And I think our community will really eat it up and and. Try to help us.
Yep.
You know, with donations, so. Having a place for that to go is kind of important.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Excellent, thank you for all your hard work.
I know, love it.
It's not just me.
Yeah, you got a good group there, yeah.
That's awesome. Nice to see it being revived, you know.
New eyes, fresh thoughts?
Yeah.
And we have Linda Kivola and and Carl Toko are staying on with us, so they're giving us a lot of good insight too.
Good, yeah, Carl's Carl's been there.
Coffee with Ollie the other day. It was fun, got a lot of good stories.
Oh, I'm sure.
Nice.
Good information.
Yep, awesome.
And I happened to catch these guys after their meeting. And Carl came along on my walk through the cemetery, which often ends up at the round table on the selectmen button. Carl gave me, he said, hey, cause I think Sean or somebody brought up the. Sixth Regiment thing and the reenactors and the and then Carl says, hey, you know, right over there is a guy buried. Who wrote um a memoir and he was a prisoner prisoner of war in the Revolutionary War.
Wow.
Lived in Smithville, uh his name Ebenezer Fletcher. He said, there's a book, so I went online and as a P S A, if anyone wants a really good read. Ebenezer Fletcher, look online, they have reprints.
Yeah.
Unbelievable story.
Carl actually said that we have a copy in the Historical Society.
There is, but you can buy paperback thing, I paid under twenty bucks for it.
Yeah.
And it is an unbelievable story, in short, you could read it in one evening.
Yeah.
So. Lots of resources in town.
Yeah, no, that truly is.
There's good hi- good histories to that.
And then you can walk over and look at his grave.
Yeah, yeah, so it's real tangible.
I know.
And you can walk an eighth of a mile and see where he lived.
And I think that's important to recognize Revolutionary War, because that's why Memorial Day is here. And I think a lot of people lose.
Well, Civil War is why it was here, yeah. But then now it's all wars, but I think it was started in the Civil War, yeah.
I think I think people lose track of where these things come from and why.
Right.
Yeah, how fortunate we are.
Amen. Alright, so. Were you gonna do Central or Soldiers Monument?
Soldiers.
Okay. And you asked that so.
Yeah, the same, yeah, so it seems like it's tight for time, we have a lot of veterans that would like to speak. You know, I'd forego mine as well, yeah.
That's true, I mean, usually we're not real tight for time, so we could have.
Yeah.
We'd be happy to have guest speakers, we still do the introductory. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm keeping an open mind to.
Yeah, definitely.
Somebody speaking.
Excellent.
And you do have Sterns Burton Lecture Fund.
I'm sorry?
Sterns Burton Lecture Fund. That you guys could access if you ever wanted to hire a. Somebody to come and do a speech. Yeah.
I'm also of the impression that there's um. Some federal grant money for patriotic purposes as well.
Be careful.
State, state.
Okay, a little bit better, but still be careful.
Jason's very wary of that money.
I haven't looked into it.
Yeah. Yeah.
For certain things like the fourth of July parades.
Cool.
Somebody was just telling me about it, so I'm gonna look into that as well.
Nice.
Excellent. That's great to hear.
Where would we put that money?
Well, don't start that.
No, we can't help you there, that's part of your your uh looking into. That's part of your looking into, yeah.
Okay.
We gotta figure it out, it makes sense, so I don't see how it can't be done, there must be a way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully we can find something, we're just until we can get a warrant article made.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, worst case scenario, I don't see why instead of. Donating like if somebody just wanted to pay for the band, you know what I mean, if you wanted to pay for the band, just pay for the band. Instead of it coming in, going out.
Could we out of the selectmen's budget?
No, but you know what I'm saying, no, not at, no, no, I'm not saying out of budget, I'm saying as a personal donation, like.
But you wouldn't get a tax write off. That would be the only carrot missing. Unless we had an account.
Is that the only reason you're doing it, is to get the tax write off?
A lot of businesses do.
Not out of the goodness of your heart?
You would like to think, but a lot of them may not care, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's more to come on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Will you follow up with me on?
Maybe.
What you find out.
I see.
Alright, I know where you're going. I'm just kidding.
I'll get I'll get my hand soon as I hear back from people.
Alright, well, I'm sorry I took more time than I expected.
You're fine.
Well, thanks for all your time and your committee members' time, yeah. It's great, I'd like to keep them encouraged, so please don't.
Well, that's.
Yeah, it's positive, everything's positive, it's just problem solving, yeah.
Yeah, we just gotta figure it out, yep, love it.
If we can keep the momentum going, we got good things in our future.
I love it.
Excellent.
It's awesome.
Alright.
Cool, thank you, Sean. Thank you for your hard work, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
So Warwick Mills update?
So um we had spoken a couple of weeks ago about um the. Status of the lease agreement and all that, and so when I looked into it, they had not increased, they were supposed to increase the rent. Um every year and they hadn't done that, so I sent an email that I copied all you guys on. And they, we got the check today to make up the difference and they'll be going forward. Um, and she, I also asked her for the their signed agreement. And the insurance certificate, which she said she was working on, I don't have it yet, but so. So there's that, we're good.
Good stuff, yeah.
Although they are using the whole building pretty much from what Mark and Peter said.
They were when we wrote that agreement.
Yeah, pretty much, they're using, yeah, yeah, so I don't I don't think they, I mean, I know they had people taking stuff out like crazy, but.
Apparently they put it in.
Brought stuff in too, so I don't know. So, yeah, so all caught up. And like I said, we got that check today or yesterday? I forget it, which it's all run into it, they currently showed it to me though.
You had put in a request to find out how much space they were actually taking.
Yeah, well, that sounds like most of the building. Cause I thought it was part of our discussions that um those new rates were, yeah, it was gonna be reduced, but it wasn't written into the lease, so.
Right.
Or it wasn't, okay, cause I thought that, I thought it was settled that they were gonna get a thousand square feet.
The lease does say something, it gives some direction, it gives a first floor.
First floor.
Yeah, just the first floor.
Done the whole second, which could be putting that structure in jeopardy, I don't know. There's a lot of stuff up there and heavy stuff too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like different stuff than what was up there before.
No, when you, when the selectmen walked through.
Yeah.
But Mark and Peter went up.
I remember you and I, whoa, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was big, yeah, rolls, yeah, yeah.
So, I haven't been up since.
Hmm.
Yeah.
So.
Hmm, uh well, it's good that they're paid up.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Um, no. No, it's the top of my head.
Jason.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
That stuff. Forgot about that, thanks for flipping through your papers.
These two.
Um, so. Peter had sent out um. A quote for gra- three quotes for gravel and three quotes for um the lawn mowing. So. And so I attached his email to all three and they're two sided, some of them are two sided, so just a flyer.
Okay.
Trying to conserve paper here, um the mowing one, are we looking at that first?
Pick one.
Uh, I just wanna let you know, cause the, we've been, we've been. We have been mowing the corner of Main Street next to the Old Town Hall, apparently for years. No idea why, cause we only own like under the drip edge, not even three feet. So, um I just, I said that to him today, I'm like, we shouldn't be mowing that, so they need to all take these out of their quotes. And you need to let them know that they don't need to go over there and mow somebody else's lawn, um.
So now who's gonna mow in front of the town hall then, cause that is.
The old town hall?
Yeah. I guess. Someone will. That's the only land the town owns is coming straight, no, I know there is a little bit of grass there, isn't there? Maybe there's not.
I mean, I can go over with my hand mower. It's not even, it's hardly any.
I know.
Yeah, but if we stop doing that, that Jason's point, then is it gonna grow or?
Won't, because I'm planning on uh. Putting that thing to use. Not I, the Heritage Commission is hoping to, we're gonna explore the option.
Thought you were stalled out.
We are, and we may get more stalled out, don't you worry. Some bad news come to me, but maybe it won't come to fruition.
Well, that would be nice.
But.
Hmm.
One of the members might step down, so.
So mowing quotes.
So these are the quotes.
So these are the quotes and Peter's recommendation. How you doing?
Good. Are they comparable to what we paid last year?
A little more, everything's going up. Up and up and up.
But not grossly increased?
Twenty two, it was last year twenty.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, not huge.
What was the mowing?
I think it was twenty last year, do you have your laptop yet?
I left my new.
That'd be a great report at home.
Yeah, I can't remember. Let me stop bringing my laptop in here, so I can just look up stuff.
Was it level five?
It's not, uh yeah, did we increase it, do you remember?
Last year we increased it.
Yeah. For this year, for twenty four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was, it was nineteen thousand one seventy three the year before. So there was an increase put in?
I believe there was, yeah.
So we're looking at twenty two. Twenty one eight, twenty two two.
Per mow, why so?
Twenty three.
This first one has a separate for Smithville. Ball field.
Oh, so that gets added to the twenty three.
Seventy five per mow.
Oh, per mow.
And then from what I understand, Smithville's not actually going to be mowed. This year, like so it won't be a part of any of these contracts, yeah, Smithville in general.
Oh, how come?
The ball field.
No one's gonna use it?
No, no, I guess the softball has a good solid approval from the high, like to use the high school field on off times. And then uh upper field down at the park, and then baseball. I forget where else they were gonna go, but nobody seemed to have a need uh for Smithville. And then in the past, um none along care companies had mowed Smithville, it was um, you know, Josh Alex had done it. A year or two, like, cause he wanted to be able to utilize it for softball, so I believe he just went down there with his personal. Mower and could mow it.
Cause it is available for townspeople to use.
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen a few families do pickup games, but they may have to bring a mower if they wanna do a pickup game.
Yeah, unless, yeah.
Yeah.
So as far as, you know, um the the kids' sports, there's no need, so we could definitely, you know.
So if you still saw it as a need, you know, four or six times a year, at least keep it down.
So that people could go down and utilize that park essentially. Yeah.
I think I've heard of two people say that they've gone there and done wiffle ball games, so I don't know if that's enough to justify it.
Yeah.
We have a couple of times over fifteen years, so.
Yeah.
But I know a lot of dog owners use that field for fetch.
Yeah, yeah.
So whether. What did he say, four to six times?
Yeah, and there's one that quotes it six times, it was fifteen, they changed it to six.
That was Lowe's.
Yeah, and then. This one doesn't break it out, oh no, this was on the back, a hundred seventy five per mow. If need be.
Well, Lowe's had the uh Smithville Common mowing fifteen times.
Right, and then they creased it out and changed it to six.
No, no, he's talking the common.
Oh.
Common.
Which is just that little stretch.
Are we doing the common anyway?
We do all the commons, cause it's com- it's town land.
Yeah.
Okay, so the only thing we're looking at is uh.
Ballpark.
The ballpark, so do we take um. If we're not gonna do the ballpark, can we take another seven hundred eighty off that price?
Or like Sean said, could we recommend to him change it to three or four or?
I feel like you almost need at least uh six to.
If you wanna use it.
It's basically monthly, yeah.
So it's been a sporadic thing, and I know Peter asked me about that, and I said, I know it's been mowed and then some years it's not mowed. Um, we're looking at seven hundred eighty for that.
Yeah, if they have another park available, you know, for use. Seems worthwhile.
Yeah, but it's half the amount of the rest of the Lowe's, everything else was fifteen on that one, that one's only six.
And the highest is Silver Leaf?
Yeah, yeah, twenty three.
Which would be. Yeah, around twenty four thousand two hundred or so.
Oh, yeah, if you add back in the Smithville.
Then Lowe's lawn at home is twenty two thousand two hundred and forty. And Setlet is twenty one thousand eight hundred and fifteen. Whereas um. Lowe's is um.
Local.
Yeah, local. And um. A young man cutting his teeth, you know, he's been out doing uh some lawn care over the last couple of years. Uh shows some motivation, I know he just got a a new zero turn mower. Uh so he's uh got the equipment to do the work.
Now we can give him the money to pay it off?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I'd say we go with that recommend.
Yeah, and that's also Peter's recommendation.
Mm-hmm. So Setlet. So Setlet, Setlet was twenty-one eight fifteen. Compared to twenty-two eight forty, so the uh
Four hundred bucks, not even?
Yeah, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, yeah, more.
That's not really a good scope of work.
On Setlet?
Doesn't seem I would assume it's all the same.
What are your thoughts between the three though?
I'll go with um Peter seems to know them better than anybody else.
Okay.
And I'd go with his recommendation.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to accept the um mowing bid from Lowe's Lawn and Home uh for twenty-two thousand two hundred and forty. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, gravel crushing?
Yep.
Now we're revi- are we reviewing the um gravel?
Yes.
Yeah, I've got a question on on that. Um, basically, um if you're recommending by chance any of those, um that for going with four thousand yards, um you don't pay twenty-five hundred dollar mobilization fee.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And at seven dollars and twenty-five cents a yard, uh that's quite a bit of um extra gravel. So would it be actually worth um going with four thousand and having something left over for next year?
Mm-hmm. I think the intent, from what I understood when I talked to Peter, is they get um piles of rock and paving and whatever, they s- they pile it as they work on these roads. And then, once the pile gets big enough, that's when they would start to crush it. And whatever that ends up being for yardage, it ends up being, and they're gonna do the whole pile. So if it gives them crushed gravel for the next two years, then that's great, or
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I mean, what he was, well, what caught my eye was that um the trucking was being based on three thousand yards.
Right, yeah, I asked him about that this morning.
This one's on three.
Um, but so that's gonna be ten dollars a yard, because it has to go through the cone crusher.
Yeah.
So it would be
Yeah.
It would be the jaw and the cone together, so that would be ten dollars a yard for that one.
Yeah. Cause the other two quotes are substantially higher.
And it adds up to thirty thousand.
Right. And this for four thousand yards is adds 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 up to twenty-nine thousand. And because they have a, they have a co- closed circuit plant, so what that means, I learned all kinds of stuff today.
It is.
Is that it goes, it's not a jaw and a cone, it just keeps going through until it falls through the sifter, so it's, it's the perfect size.
Through the screen, yeah.
Whereas this, if they have to put it through the jaw first, and then if it's still too big, then it has to go through the cone. So there is stuff
Which most of it will still be.
Right, right. Cause the jar only does uh four to five inches or something. Yeah, three to five inches.
Yeah, that's just right.
So.
Hmm.
So this guy is cheaper per yard. It's seven twenty-five.
He does have the four thousand, whereas I noticed Garden Services estimates three thousand plus or minus in the pile that's there.
Yeah. Plus or minus, so it'd be Right, so it'd be more if it is four thousand.
Yeah.
But it's ten thou- it's ten dollars per yard.
Compared to seven twenty-five.
Right.
But if it ended up being three thousand yards there, we'd end up with a twenty-five.
Well, and that totals twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty.
Right.
Alright, I make the motion that we go with
It's about half the price, yeah.
Right, ch- mhm. Chancy.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
I was just about to do the math, but you already did it.
Yeah. Yeah, boosted them up, and then it was just like, and then took it away and added that.
Yeah.
Yeah, half price.
Well, hopefully we get four thousand yards, I think.
Yeah.
I know, that would be great.
Hey, I'll donate some rock.
Tell Peter.
I need rocks, I wanna make a wall. I wanna build a wall.
Are we not taking them from that pile?
No, I don't wanna take it from that pile.
That's what I did, was um the wall from the
I know, I love your wall. I, that's what I wanna build in front of my house.
It it took a while, um, for maybe three years to do it. And that was just after uh uh clearing out the backyard, all that stone was just on the surface.
Yeah. And I swear, rocks grow.
They do, they come up.
I'm not even kidding. Like seriously, they just keep coming to the top, I'm like
You know what it is?
England potatoes.
Um, freeze thought cycle, actually pushes the stones up.
Yeah, pushes them up, I know.
Alright, so before we got into that, you had a aha moment, do you remember what that was?
It was a lawn mowing.
Well, no, like she had said aha, and then Jason pulled those out.
Well, that was just, I think she saw me traveling.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, I said, oh, yeah, 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 that's what it was. Yeah, no, I'm good.
Oh, maybe cause you got, okay, alright, alright, there. So do you have anything, Jason?
I do.
What'd you get?
Once again, the cemetery walk this afternoon paid off. And I met
What'd you find?
I met Patrick Bells, who is a surveyor for the dam bureau on the D E S, um Yeah, so I stopped and chatted with him, and it turns out remember we signed the papers, when was it, twenty-two or twenty-one?
Yeah.
A long time ago.
So then they went and they got filed properly. And now he said, uh, AG just sent them this year, and said, get it moving.
Finally.
And so there's surveyors out there, and he showed me um his sketch
Excellent.
that he, they had, they were working with, based on the agreement that we signed, and it looks just like what we talked about.
Alright.
And he, yeah, it was really good.
Yeah.
How serendipitous.
There's something uh
Nice.
Something happening now. He did say, just like we were told before, it's got many levels.
And we can only talk through what you're in.
That it still has to go through in the state, because it's a transfer of land, and it's gonna be a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
One to two one to two years to go through all the red tape of the state.
Yeah.
But he said, he's hoping
Unbelievable.
Yeah.
That he's gonna be able to witness uh the closure.
The end to this.
Well, but I'm gonna be able to witness it at this point, geez.
So I told him
There's been so many different people.
Most assuredly, the celebrity stand by, wait and waiting, yeah. So this is, that was good.
Yeah. Should I put his name in the minutes or no?
It doesn't matter.
Just D E S guy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, nothing definitive, other than there is some surveying going on.
Yeah.
That's awesome. At least it's moving forward.
Very good.
So I, I'd seen that, cause we actually, Nicole and I took a walk down there too.
Hmm.
And it was nice, you know, you know, to take a walk around and saw some new stakes.
Yeah, I caught him on his lunch break.
Being different tree branches and
Yeah.
Nice.
I thought it was interesting, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Tree branches or whatever, you know, with the, with the pink tape, yeah, yeah. It was kinda cool. Instead of bringing out, you know, nice oak.
Used for stakes. Yeah.
You know, brand new stakes that, you know, cost a little bit, like utilize what's around, right?
Yeah.
Um, but also, I'd never really spent a lot of time just kinda moseying around down there.
Mm-hmm.
But um down in the back, on the right side, where the new section is, there's actually like that picnic table, like a sitting area down there.
Well, you, you never knew that.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, yeah, but, yeah.
Nice shady spot in the summer.
Get that all cleaned up and cleared out and
Yeah, it's a nice shady spot, like if somebody was, you know, had family or something over and had lost someone, they can
Yeah.
take a break from the sun and go down under them.
Yeah, it's almost hidden down back there.
Is that part of the cemetery mowing area?
It's in the wood.
Do they usually keep it, oh?
There is no grass back there.
Oh.
Yeah, it's kinda mossy, yeah, it's very shaded.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's kinda neat, cause you wonder how that sitting area got there, cause it's not just a picnic, like a wood picnic table, it's an actual installed steel, rubber coated.
No, it's a steel. I don't know the whole story. I always assumed it came from the Morrell family.
Okay.
Cause they have that little area where it's stone paved.
Mm-hmm.
Right, when you walk into the new area from the old, right, and there's a bench that you can sit on, and then it
Oh.
Yeah.
Memorial family memorial there.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So I assumed it was given as part of that, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, cause it must've been something when it was put in.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They probably, you know, really did something to that area, and now it's kinda getting overgrown and taking over.
Yeah, and there, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, and actually, I meant to reach out to Peter too, to let him know about that trash can that's down back there.
Yeah.
So they can have it on their cycle, cause I noticed there's probably years and years of them, old flowers, they're just, the cemetery gets cooked, yeah, cleaned up and
Dead plastic flowers.
you know, get tossed in there and starting to spew over. Yeah, well, it's a nice little spot down there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, then uh the other week, I think it was before the elections even, I'm not sure when it was.
Hmm.
Um, I got a text from the one in charge of soccer from the rec department, was, I could look up his name.
Josh Alex?
Alex, Chad, Chad.
I don't know.
Alex.
Um maybe I can, Kevin Thompson texted me, he got his name, got my name from, I don't know who, but he is in charge of the soccer for the rec department.
Not familiar to me, in town?
And in fact Yeah.
Hmm.
That's Josh Alex, isn't it?
No.
No, he works in conjunction, he's a soccer coach, working in conjunction with the rec department.
Yeah. Okay, so soccer girl.
Oh, at the high school, yeah.
S- oh, so he's from the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
However, that, be that as it may, I'll just read what he said. He said, I would like to have a group of uh players asking for donations from the public at the transfer station on Saturday, April sixth. For the Florida trip for the rec department soccer.
Oh, okay.
Cause he's involved in that Florida trip.
Right.
That ended it, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And so
Yeah, part of the, the travel theme, yeah.
I told Yeah, I told him that he should, he's gotta talk with Peter, um and that the board could formalize approval.
And they would have to be in a safe area.
Told a lot of the kids to be there.
Hmm.
So then, yeah, Peter and Steve
Have him be on the grassy knoll.
Well, Peter and Steve would handle
Yeah.
however that goes, we don't have to, but just to make them aware.
Yeah.
You guys have any issue with the kids being up there?
Um.
None.
It's formal then, huh?
Yeah.
April sixth.
Good.
When you bring your garbage, there will be a fundraiser going on.
Alright.
Um the last thing I had was to reconsider the sign amnesty.
What?
It's, there is times when I go home from here, and I think, what did I do? I don't like what I did.
Yeah.
And this is one of them times where I thought, I don't know about offering amnesty for stealing town property. It seems like a bad idea.
It's a one-time deal.
It just, it's
Won't be repeated.
It just doesn't seem like it's setting a good precedent.
Which is interesting, cause from what I understand, just even speaking about that, sign showed up.
Yeah, before we even did anything.
Yeah, yeah.
We had a really awesome thing to post too.
What's that?
We had a really awesome thing to post.
Yeah, and I just look at like around the country. Sorry. But there's like this I don't know. Lack of justice and injustices are just always, it's like everyday news. And then I think, yeah, the sign is worth what, seventy-five bucks or whatever we said, whatever we were told. And you can look at that two ways. Like for seventy-five dollars, you're gonna suspend your laws? I mean, I don't know, it seems
I thought they were more than seventy-five dollars.
Maybe they were, whatever, whatever the value, I guess that didn't really have a point. I didn't have a point when I rambled off on that.
Right, too.
Yeah.
On that part of it, but, yeah, I don't know, suspending
Yeah, I don't think, the, the one that got me was they took a, a stop sign and at an intersection, and um, yeah, that's wrong, that gave me to an accident.
It could.
Way too easy.
And, and taking street signs, um I happened to talk with the sergeant at the um polls and just asked him what his thoughts were. And he said, he has, he did have one time where he was personally affected. Like his safety was put in jeopardy, because a backup officer from another town couldn't find the road.
Right.
Cause the sign was missing.
Right.
And this was actually, I, from what I understood, it was an actual like threatening situation where he could've really used the backup. And so, coming from that I'm like, hmm.
I was, the way I was looking at it was to get the signs back.
Yeah.
So we didn't
Over not getting the signs back. And even when signs go up, they seem to disappear, and I don't know.
Yeah, somebody said that, you know, it's something, gotta sign back, that we went back up, and a couple days later it was missing again.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I don't know if there's a different type of sign that we can get that's got like a D O tag in it, or
There you go. Can we do it?
Yeah, cause we can't have, you know, you never know what, when something's gonna disappear, so I'm, I'm not sure what the right solution is just to
Yeah.
to stop that from happening.
I know.
Uh, but I hazard to think that much like the burning of the tires typically happens when there's some type of upsetness about something, you know, like it's, it's a pointed thing, it's not just for fun, you know, like, I don't maybe they are doing it for fun, I don't know, like I just, I don't know, I don't understand.
Yeah, I don't either.
That's why a tire marks in front of North Church Market.
Uh, no, uh, but not burnouts, but I mean, like the burning of tires in the middle of the road.
Yeah. Which, that too can get extremely dangerous. I think in Ridge last year, someone was, he almost killed.
That happened two years ago.
Hmm. Yeah.
Not a joke.
No.
I know. So I don't know. And he did say that that's a common small town, you're never gonna stop it.
Yeah.
So is it worth offering amnesty, if it's just for the value of the sign? He didn't, he didn't feel it was worth it.
If it's just a sign, I can say it's not worth it, but it's a lot of signs. I don't know.
Yeah, and we don't know how many would actually take advantage. Yeah, and we don't know how many would actually take advantage of it.
Yeah.
But he said they've had, they'll find signs and they'll be like, I think this belongs to Ringe and they'll ask Ringe and Ringe will be, yeah, we're missing that sign and they'll meet him at the border and hand it over.
Yes.
So. It may not be, uh, I don't know. That is my reconsideration.
Yeah, we're looking to do that for April, right?
Mm-hmm, I was gonna have Jenny post it this week.
Sure.
And it it's like kinda funny and whatever.
Have a good night.
Thank you for the entertainment, have a good night.
Thanks, take care.
That's what we're here for, Joe.
I'll send it to you guys tomorrow.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
What's that?
What we were gonna post on the website and on Facebook.
Hmm.
I'll send it, I mean, it's kinda funny and.
Yeah.
Like not making light of it, hey, did you ever make a stupid mistake and wake up the next morning with a street sign in your house? Now's your chance to bring it back, you know, it's like stuff like that, I don't know.
Hmm, yeah, it's it's a tough one to me because I do, well, I said yes.
Right.
And it's not because I just was afraid to argue with you guys, cause you know me better.
Yeah.
Right.
I appreciate your uh reconsideration and extra thought on it, cause I did, um
Yeah.
expend some extra energy in that and, you know, speak with a couple of people about it and
Hmm.
still couldn't really come with it, up with the downside to it, cause with the way that we're at now, we're not gonna get the signs back.
Oh.
Anyways, and maybe this could lead to some feeling of goodwill towards things and
Right.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure with the negative.
Yeah. So, and in my mind, the negative is more the principle of things.
Could be.
Right, and you're not, and you're not getting.
Yeah.
That word. Yeah.
There isn't a consequence for your action.
Yeah, re- it, right. And it's, that's a tough thing to come from the leaders of the town.
Mm-hmm.
It sends a message that maybe I'm not comfortable with. We've already been accused of that, are we?
Yeah.
With zoning enforcement and none of it, I don't know.
Well, I mean. Again.
But at the same time, people are people and I can understand that scenario, uh the sergeant had spoken about, you know, where the sign was important.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
But tying it into this amnesty, attempt that amnesty and trying to get some of the signs back and change some of the culture and the relationship between you know, certain uh parts of the community and the town office, uh showing that, you know, we're willing to bend a bit, you know, and it is the value of the sign, I don't know what the um, you know, heavy handed fist of the law, you know, reads as to, you know, for people that are caught stealing signs, but I don't know.
Yeah.
That was given to us.
Yeah, I sent it to you though.
Yeah.
It's a fine.
Yeah.
You know what, I'm kind of wondering that if we put signs up um, you know how like um bathrooms, they have screws that go in and you really can't take them out without a special tool?
Yeah.
You know, put the signs up with those kind of tools, with those kind of screws.
Whoa, they size all the poles?
Hmm?
Just take a size off and cut the pole.
Yeah, the problem we have is battery powered tools now. You pretty much can't make something theft proof.
Mm.
Right.
Yeah.
The only thing that can help is if they have it in their heart that stealing is wrong. That's what makes.
So I don't, like where I was going with that was trying to wrap some so they're self admittedly took the sign or my kid took this sign twenty years ago, cause I'm sure that's gonna play out too.
Yeah.
Where there's people that aren't comfortable, but that's been in their house and they don't wanna cause a problem, you know?
Right.
Maybe there'd be.
Don't want Shaws to find it in their trash.
Some type of uh I don't know. Self volunteer hours, you know, come, you know, volunteer for Memorial Day or Fourth of July or
Hmm. Yeah.
you know, a couple hours, so there's some type of trade there, um I don't know if that would.
Wow.
No, I think it needs to be a financial hit.
I think it's n- I think it needs to be anonymous, or we're not gonna get any signs back. Which is my opinion. A a one-time thing, we're not gonna do it ever again, maybe twenty years from now.
Which. Which there wouldn't need to be an official anonymous because somebody can drive by and whip a sign out their window and it lands on our parking lot and we're not gonna throw it in the garbage.
Right.
So, to make it an officially done.
Well, I mean, we have a specific area with a picture where it's gonna go.
No, I, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know, I'm, I'm not motivated to um reconsider it, but I f- feel like it's worthwhile and it could be wrong and see what happens after, maybe every sign in the town disappears and then they're just waiting till next April to give them back.
Cause it was a neat thing to have for the year.
I don't know.
Yeah.
And you.
I don't know if that's the.
So which step do you wanna reconsider?
I, uh.
No, I wouldn't do it every year.
No, it was me that wanted to reconsider.
Yeah, Jason. Yeah, I was looking to reconsider.
I wanted to reconsider doing the stolen sign amnesty month for April. Cause we said yes. Let's do that, let's offer amnesty, maybe we could do it for a week.
Yeah, we could. Okay.
Well, I'm just saying, don't do it every year, this is a one-time thing, you know, I've not, cause then you don't wanna, I mean, you don't wanna carry it.
I'll tell you what. Yeah. Tell you what.
Right, we're not gonna call it the annual.
You take something, no, you take something after that, forget it, you suffer the consequences.
You go to jail.
You offer.
Pay the fine.
Yeah.
We're holding it.
Offer it one time.
I know.
I look at you.
And whatever, then afterwards.
Hope one of your kids isn't doing it.
It's all hell's gonna break loose.
Well, I mean, we have.
Which means that it's going to be.
Or we don't offer amnesty and it just is what it is and we don't get any signs, we just order some new ones and everything just stays the same. And we keep losing signs and
Right.
there's no outreach to anybody and no you know, possibility of prosecution really, cause it's, at the end of the day, it's really low level stuff that you're talking about. Um, I don't know, it just, I don't know.
I don't know.
I see the harm in it.
That's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
I feel like a one-time thing and after that, this is, this is your only chance. You steal something after that, then you pay the penalty if you get caught.
Twenty hours of community service picking up trash alongside the road.
Well, you can make that a policy. I'm not gonna put it in the amnesty month.
Possibly. Yeah.
What's the, you you're not gonna make, if somebody returns.
No, what I'm saying is, you know, financial, you know, whatever the price of the sign is, you can get that, or you could just deal it out as a uh a community service as a sentence.
What are your thoughts on, cause we already voted to have April as the amnesty month, what are your thoughts on reconsidering it before we post it?
Post it for the first time and it's a one-time good deal.
So he's not looking to reconsider.
So I'm outnumbered in reconsidering, so.
Yeah. Yes.
So be it.
Motion fails.
Motion failed.
No, even though there wasn't a motion.
This is kind of how we've been working.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you what Jenny and I worked on for the ad.
Alright, yeah, and then they'll post it before.
Also, get your. I wanted to try to post it by the end of the week.
Yeah.
And then again next week.
Oh, we can just start next week, right, next Wednesday?
And don't post it April first.
That's all I have for round table.
Cause I w- I would like to see the flyer too, that'd be nice. Right.
What do you mean?
See the what?
The flyer, like the posting. The what was gonna go up for the post.
Or.
Yeah, I was gonna send you that tomorrow.
Oh, you'd like to see it on the email.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
I can send you that tonight, it's already done, we already worked on it and it's done.
I thought you were sending it mail out.
Yeah.
So I could send you that either tonight or tomorrow, we, I wanted to try to post it by the end of the week this week to give the heads up, and then I was thinking of printing a couple, putting one at the post office, one at the P D, one at the market.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Good luck getting the P D to agree to amnesty.
Well, I mean, the 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 spot to return him is gonna be down at, in front of the office down there, so.
You know, if we don't get a suitable thing, we're both gonna have to reconsider just putting a trail camera somewhere.
Yeah, well, that can be another discussion for another time, I think.
Yeah.
At every sign.
I won't, I, I, you'd be hard pressed to sell me on starting to videotape our citizens.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, Lou?
What?
Any the new old for us this evening?
If I have anything to offer, I'd want to do it of um um, non-public.
You're gonna mention people's names?
Excuse me?
You're gonna mention people's names?
Yeah. Okay.
Alright.
Do we take it the end of time or later or however you want to do it? If you wanna do it.
I don't know what you're talking about, so.
That's right. And that's exactly what.
I'm always willing to, to do like, to, like, yeah, no, I'm not stopping you, that's for sure.
And that's exactly right.
Um. So, uh at the meeting last night, um Mindy had.
Well, I do have, yeah, nevermind, I I do have another one for non-public anyway, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, um Mindy had mentioned that they're uh painting the buildings down at the park white, the block buildings. Um, and she was looking for approval to paint the, the sign, the memorial park sign, um white as well. Protecting the memorial park logo, like what's on there, of course, and then, so just the frame of the sign, uh to kinda revamp it. And she was looking to see if that was okay with us. Again, then.
And I I told her I liked the idea.
Okay.
Yeah, took it forward.
Alright. Alright. Do you have any concerns with it turning white?
None at all.
Alright, so white's good. Alright. Um Earlier this uh afternoon when I came in, uh Ron had approached me as well, um and he was looking to hire Jennifer Worth on to uh update the town channel message board once a week. Uh Jennifer said that she would like to do it and she's already, you know, working on similar things, so she didn't feel like it'd be that big of a deal uh for her to do.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you guys had any um concerns with Jennifer coming on to update that message board for the television channel.
So she's currently serving um in the building department.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, man, just.
Just so the hours are kept separated.
Yeah, yeah, and that would be paid out of the uh video committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, budget and its own whole thing.
Yeah.
So the thought was uh to do it once a month, so she'd get paid once a month.
Yeah, it'd be.
And figured, you know, probably take four hours or so a month to do.
Cool, that's not horrible.
What's that?
What?
I said that's not horrible.
Four hours a month.
Yeah. Yeah. So you guys good with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Alright. Yeah, and we already kinda touched on all, like that meeting last night, um and what we discussed, so just a lot of different things going on and, um yeah, as things move, you know, we'll put something out, you know, for the two seventy fifth, uh coming up soon, you know, asking for the different, you know, town functions. Um, to send a rep or, you know, committees come together, probably gonna need, hopefully a pretty big room for it, um and just, you know, it can start uh uh, what the heck is it, brainstorming, yeah, yeah.
I'm just, what do you think in this room?
Yeah, 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 I think it'll be, yeah, that'll be good.
So we'll have a quorum.
Which is fine, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you were hired, yeah, so it should be. Lou.
He'll be noticed and, but
Yeah.
We'll al- also stay away from making decisions.
Not that you'd necessarily be making. I was gonna say, not that you'd necessarily be making any selectmen decisions, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, that's all I had. Second call? No. Hearing uh nothing. Ron, thank you for your.